...
Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda and there is one liquor license of the Malverge Fairview Golf Course.
A motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. One liquor license for Fairview Golf Club in Malverge, Class C. Any other further questions, comments? Not all those in favor? I attended, uh, I've had very, very good, interesting meetings that we held, a lot of good information. Number one, Mr. Grimick, that's how you pronounce his name. He's our health, public health person on ISAC. Uh, the main thing that he stressed more than anything was that every county will have a public health office. You know, when they reorganize. He says exactly how it's gonna be organized yet, we don't know. So it's gonna be up. Yeah. And I did attend the engineers' breakfast and stuff, sat on their board and that was one of the main topics was with greater operators. You know, they're, they're just not available with the pain and construction and stuff. Trying to find people to look at them, you know, so. And then, uh, last night I had a Mr. Production meeting. Uh, we're going to, uh, build a fourth house. We got some booze entitled to leftover ARPA money. Six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We're gonna build a house and pay some other things, but Essex asked if they can have a house in their town.
Essex?
Essex, Iowa. And we thought, well, why not? They have-
Why not?
They're developing a, uh, new area. They've got probably fifteen fairly new houses. They've built four in the last year and a half. So we're gonna go in that area so we don't look out of place.
Might be some jobs over there for them.
Well, it creates, you take twenty-four seven care, you gotta have how many people, maybe they'll build a house and live there or they live there or something. So we figured why not spread it around the communities and we will also probably be receiving some houses from some other companies, outfits. So-
Wonderful.
I could have hung a pop all morning on ISAC, but I'll quit.
Yeah.
A lot of you prepared.
Yeah, I too attended ISAC. It was a great conference. Some of the better-
Yeah, some of the-
............ Um, good to see other people and, uh, uh, I was also elected, uh, first vice president for the ISAC Board, so that was nice. And, uh, got the recertification of the, uh, Certified County Supervisors, so. Did you get your certificate?
Okay.
Okay. I was gonna grab it for you, but I figured someone else could. It was a good conference. It was a good seat.
That's the gentleman that spoke on, uh-
It was good.
CIA, whatever you wanna call it. I mean, this guy-
Jimbo.
It wasn't any sleeping people in the office.
Yeah, everyone came out of there and said, wow, that was neat. That was, that was good.
He was good.
I saw him last year.
Have he talked on what?
He's at CIA.
Yeah.
Things goes on, you know, what, what's going on in the country right now, you know, things where he's been, the things he's done.
I opened.
It was interesting because last year I saw my wife about it and then we went out to eat and I saw him in their, uh, Pleasantville's or something.
Oh, yeah.
You say that guy there? She's like, yeah. Just looked like a normal-
Yeah.
-older gentleman. I said, that's the guy I told you those stories about. Just look over there, no, like he's completely lethal with his hands. Probably has weapons all over him, but it's like, it's crazy. Probably listening to me tell you that you're not gonna die. He loved it. It was like that, really.
Ah, fantastic.
And Melvin, uh, I didn't bring it, Melvin and, uh, Grant Beager. This is of course their last conference.
And Donna.
And Donna Robertson and some other people that, uh, I can't, I should have had Grant give me a copy of it, but he's for his last time, you know, and it was amazing. It was pretty hilarious. You know, but, uh, glimmering to me though, nah, they don't match, so, but he had a good one. He will be missed. I mean, he was always, he had any questions, everybody asked him. Only been there for thirty-some years.
My leader.
Very well, too.
Yeah, so.
Fantastic. Well, I did not, um, care for blood clots, so I did take a conference calls. One was my MAPA Board meeting, uh, in Omaha. Um, what they're still working on is, um, uh, the grants and they talked about Applewood of our road in Mills County. And so I've got a separate meeting with them. I wanna know why they're trying to boot that out of our district or what the reason is. Then I also had a conference call with List Central that I sit on the board in Harlan, Iowa. Um, come to find out that, uh, they're, they are in charge of our preschools. They are in charge of, um, helping the low income. So people are starting to fill out papers for the cold winter, so they know what they're all looking for. And of course, uh, they do run on federal money and of course that's a scare. They, they don't know what that's all gonna be like. But, uh, Mills County does have a, uh, new preschool for these little tots. Um, they are just now trying to hire some more helpers, so I was very pleased to hear that. So with that, that was, that was it.
Hey, Jacob. I'm gonna hire an engineering technician.
All right. I am happy to finally bring this to you that we have the position open since January. Uh, I feel really good about Jake Vance that we're looking to hire. Interviewed him and he's passed all this pre-employment stuff. He's bringing with him, uh, survey experience. He's been working at TV two.
TV two?
Yep, for the last, uh, two years. He has his commercial drone license. He's been using drones to do surveys. And then GPS rovers, staking, all that sort of stuff. Before that, he worked at, as a real estate clerk and, um, was channeling an office or something like that, researching, uh, property boundaries and stuff like that, so.
Good.
He's got good background of interpreting the legal descriptions, so I think that will help us out a lot. He also has, uh, there was some other things he's- see where he will go. Uh, he does have hopes to becoming a civil engineer someday, so he really is interested in this field.
And he lives here in town?
He lives in downtown The Wall right now. He said he's got some family in Atlantic and Sydney. And so he had mentioned that it'll be nice being closer to him. I didn't push on that, but, uh, I think there's potential there if he will move to the community too, so. Okay, I'll let him know. But, uh, yeah, so I'm excited. I would recommend starting him. His official start date tomorrow. Have a setup with Jolene for new hire and a starting wage of twenty-eight dollars.
Is that union?
It's non-union.
Non-union.
Non-union, the way I base that salary off of is basically going off of the personnel in the office currently, uh, qualifications.
I make a motion to approve-
Vance, V.A.N.C.
To approve to hire the engineering technician of Jake Vance to start tomorrow. Twenty-eight dollars an hour, non-union, and that is with a six-month probation.
Second motion.
There's been a motion made and seconded to hire Jake Vance. As an engineering technician for the county, starting tomorrow eight-twenty-eight at a salary of twenty-eight dollars an hour. Any further discussion, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
It is in that letter too. Uh, he'll sign an agreement with the county because he'll send him to all the certification courses. He's basically stating that he will.
Very good. We had long enough to, I mean-
Yeah.
Finding people. Okay.
All right, next we have, uh, proposal from Western Engineering to do an overlay on Levi Road and overlay in Broadmore Estates. They split it out into two separate jobs. When they come here, they will go from one to the other. They can do this yet this fall. Don't have a specific date yet. Um, but before the weather changes, so September, early October is what we're hoping. The total price for Levi Road, which is a length of three, approximately three miles, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents. Total proposal for Broadmore Estates, it is not the entire subdivision, it is just Grand Oak Lane. That is eighty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. So this money is budgeted. I had three hundred and fifty thousand dollars inside for Levi Road and approximately a hundred thousand dollars for Broadmore. It are, uh, the two minutes line item and our construction HMA line item. Or, uh, our maintenance HMA line item. So we have the money in there. One's a little bit less, one's a little bit more. It comes out to pretty close to what we had budgeted.
What'd you come up with total price?
Four hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents. Gotta get that eighty cents.
See, you got that eighty cents in there.
Uh, one, two, three inch overlay?
We're doing an inch and a half on Levi Road and four, uh, inch and a half on Broadmore. We've gone back and forth. We visited on site with Broadmore because it's pretty cracked up. But, uh, we feel that if we, we were gonna mill and fill, we feel that if we fill it, we must keep it ready up. We can't worry. It's had all this time, it's settled, which should be about good to go instead of going over the top. It's gonna help. We will mill into the driveways there. So our plan is to send out a letter to everyone, just kinda letting them know this construction will be going on and that will- driveway and, uh, it's for the-
We must go through the overlays of Levi- three-six, two-sixty-two, eighty.
Can I second that? Is kid loaded in the, in the line to have an overlay?
It's in my mind, but it's not called out in our prior plan.
Because kid and Levi were together.
They were together. They originally had plans to get another overlay, overlay together. And the budget for Levi Road, so hoping next year and very latest year after to put another one-
Of Rodney Lee, are we going just what we wanted before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go all the way down.
About three miles also. Kid?
A little bit more. Cause I think the total project is, uh, really something.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Levi Road and Broadmore overlay. We've done this fall. Price wise is four hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty cents. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Mr. Reds?
I'm just, yeah.
Just agree for you as a, uh, half master.
Oh, I'll be gone next week, so Kevin will be in my place. He'll be here Tuesday and then, uh, gonna recommend accepting what Phil subdivision. Um, went out there with Eagle and James and her, had a couple of things. He went out there. Uh, contractor got him fixed up. I went back out, verified they were complete, so we're ready to move forward with that. Um, we'll do a separate agreement as far as erosion control. I told you guys about it along the road. Same utility still going in. Um, that can still be handled that way, but we'll accept it. Uh, looking to also do that with Liko Hana. Could not get rock for the little bit erosion that we're having them fix. I found out he could get it. And then also I invite, uh, he's kinda down at the bottom of the whole drainage system, water going to the pool, to come to a meeting. He's very interested in that. Um, he did ask if there's a call-in option. I don't know, he might have to talk to you. But he might take that, um, available to Craig, not the model, welcome to come or more than eager to come to that meeting too. He's had some, uh, surgeries that he may not be able to attend, but I told him I could fill him in. Basically, we talked last time, creating a grass swale through there. Should help alleviate his problems. He doesn't want that. Not necessarily, but just have a meeting, talk through it. Hey, this is how we wanna solve it.
It all from there. It's hard to avoid that.
Yeah.
This was on, it was on the plan too.
Yeah, it was on the plan. It shows the dimensions of the swell and everything. Actually just sent those to Matt today. He was asking about them. I think once he kind of measures out, looks at it, he real, will realize it's not as basic as he thinks. I think he's measuring a big huge image. But really it's a foot and a half over twenty-four feet, something that's very gradual, very mobile.
And will that solve the problem?
It should because the way the land is right now, it kinda tips and curves towards this pool or things like that. It should keep it away. Just go straight towards the dip.
If I was him, I'd do anything to save that pool.
Yeah, he thinks it'll be aesthetically unpleasing, uh, but I, I think we can talk to him again.
Would this have a, a rock base to the swale then or would we try and keep it grass-like?
It would just probably be grass. Uh, you could do rock, but I would suggest just doing grasses. That's how it was in the plans and, uh, they had it vegetated with natives. I don't think he wants that. I think it's a good idea and kinda nice.
Those of the Nels will do that for free. There's a program that they do that.
Yeah, but it's also something that shouldn't have been done in the original plan.
Right.
So, I don't think they would've kinda picked for that. But I think honestly just having-
Yeah.
The sod through there would be good enough. The next question is- just be that county did it. I talked with- still conversations we had, but that might be turned up in the future.
Is there any way, Jake, that we can draw out what absolutely it would look like so he would have a good idea that-
One of the process, yeah.
So he can visualize.
Yeah, he said he's gonna go up to this laser level or something and try to visualize it more out there. So, yeah. The, the problem is he also planted some fruit trees right there. So that cross section got to shrink a little bit, maybe not much, but I told him we would do our best to not disturb that. He didn't realize that the basement was there. Technically we'd be going remote wall. They shouldn't be there, but I think we construct it and the trees will never be there.
Good.
Yeah.
Super.
So it's all like that. Oh, one of the things-
I like that.
I like that. Yeah, a couple good tidbits and information. One thing, realize just to further protect ourselves, other counties, when there's a bad wreck at any point in time, you know, there's a report from the sheriff or whatever. But then the engineer staff will go out afterwards and take their own photos and documentation. They're talking about one incident where, you know, the police report actually said that there's gravel all over the pavement and that was the cause of the crash. Well, then when the engineer went out there and took his photos and everything he could see, the gravel was on the road because of the crash, where you could see where he actually went off onto the shoulder like that, take that to gravel. And so it just, to further protect ourselves, anytime that happens, do our photos, throw them, document. Then we have a folder fit and we come to the kids, so that's one good thing I think we'll start with.
It is a good thing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, things you don't think about though.
Exactly right.
Kevin's taking our three hundred and sixtieth street project on the canons next week. Uh, we're asking for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or less, so hopefully we get that money granted and keep it forward. He's opening up.
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
I got them out a hundred more if you want.
Back with Austin. So, um, we can still show-
Did anybody think of Carol and Grant's comments?
They were all good.
Don't we chat about audio video stuff? Well, he's, he works for the company that is multi-state and he is in charge of the Nebraska side. So when he brought it up to his people, they said, our first kind of Des Moines will handle this. And I said, we have a couple of ISAC board, but because of dealing with ISAC or something, they're doing something for ISAC too. And I said, there's a couple of board members that actually are ISAC board members on this board and I think we would like someone local so we can call them and he can walk here instead of saying, you know, let's set an appointment up. I have a three-hour drive. So there's some internal stuff going on, but they are gonna get us a quote.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Some pricing if we order, so. I've got another option here. It's coming around eleven thousand.
Okay.
Replace the TV and-
That's a lot better than what you came up with before.
That's me installing everything, uh, either hooking it to the wall or we could potentially use that cart that that's on. And then, yeah, just wiring out audio stuff on itself, so. So just wanna give that to you guys. We'll keep that on that part for now and then.
I will, uh, I'll also give him a text right now and, uh,
several options.
So we really don't need any action or anything?
No, I just wanted to let you guys know I do have another option to do it ourselves. If we just buy the hardware.
You're still a single person.
Running cables to the last of, um, I can do it to twenty-two, but yeah. No, we, we're not hurting the warranty products and they would service it.
Yes.
Option to keep mine, so that's all I had.
Patrick.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Oh, Patrick, you possess them to get tablets?
Yeah. We'll dispatchers to lead this.
He's been talking about this for, it's the city business supervisor that's gonna do this. I think the total he should be, it's gonna be actually approximately nine thousand seven hundred. So if I can shine, very well, we'd require probably a budget amendment later in the year. Cause he's very precise on his numbers, so he-
I know he's been watching public health programs.
Yes, he has. He has.
What happens-
And a lot of them are, we've got-
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's right.
So.
And they have a point. Oh my gosh, what grade is Stella in?
Freshman.
She's a freshman. Holy suck, that's money. We're gonna be an empty nester here real soon. Oh man.
You better all be one of his customers and we can leave me.
Ooh, fascinating. Repetition. I love it. All right, I was just full of safety this, so, all right, um, the lead dispatcher positions we discussed a few months ago, uh, implementing those. This I've interviewed. Um, I got two that I think are great, that could absolutely accomplish the, that test. Here's the tax formulator. Yeah, it just takes you on. Um, so, Dawn, um, the way that it's structured, uh, they'll be on, um, the days and the evening shift. They'll work, you know, collaboratively, uh, collaboratively on certain, um, duties and responsibilities. It should lessen a little bit of the, um, like the daily, you know, kind of operational tasks within there off of me. I was still obviously operating that, you know, capacity and responsibility standpoint, but, um, instead of, you know, directly to me, they're more of that frontline supervisor when it comes to quality assurance, um, call reviews, um, I will open records requests, things like- frontline supervision in the event that there's, you know, a couple of calls, you know, in there that needs some additional, you know, structure, you know, some guidance. They would be right there operating in that capacity, answer those questions. But I, I do think this will be beneficial for the department to take some of that off of me.
Do they need scheduling?
In time, yes. I have kind of a method to the math that I like, you know, to do. Um, and it's, you know, me just kinda teaching them, you know, that process, what it looks like. Uh, and, and really the scheduling, the way it is, it's kind of a side career, really skewed. So I think, yes, absolutely in time. One of them will take that and then will utilize, you know, that second person, whoever it turns out to be, is kinda be that second set of eyes just to ensure before it comes to me, you know, to be signed off on. Uh, I do have the numbers broken down of what that looks like, you know, additionally. So, uh, in, in total with the FICA, the I-Part of the additional salary, it's just under ten thousand dollars. And I definitely, I do think that that is, that is absolutely worth, you know, um, worth it. Uh, it would be to take effect that Sunday, September eighth, which is the, the next pay period, that was gonna be requested jointly, just having all the precautions there, yeah.
I'd make the question to approve the permission of Dawn Elizabeth to the supervisory position. To the supervisory position.
Do you have the same budget?
Currently, um, in total value, I would say yes, but it would be utilizing some of the dedicated, you know, salary, FICA and IFRS. Of the tenth dispatcher. We were hired, we did have ten. We unfortunately lost one due to some family and personal issues. Um, so yes, but if we were full staffed, we would need to budget amend for this, you know, nine hundred seventy-five dollars. So in the event the county does, you know, another budget amendment, it would need to be included in there, especially if I get to that tenth. But in the event I can't get the tenth hired, it would just kind of be pulling from that larger salary, FICA might school.
Okay.
Same line item, just.
Uh, yeah, it'll all at the same fund, you don't have to just be pulling out of that, you know, you know, until. But I would make that recommendation, you know, to, to just have it in there just to be in case.
Then I second that.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve a motion of dispatcher to lead dispatchers. Dawn Crittison and Elizabeth Young. At twenty-six eighteen per hour. Any further discussions, comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, absolutely, I appreciate it, thank you so much. All of this over Jolene, so she'll have that.
I'll be excited to hear how things kind of work out for you.
I, I.
You've been talking about this quite a lot.
Yeah, evaluate it and see if it really does, you know, lessen, which I do think that will. There'll be a time period where it'll feel like more, just to get them kind of spun up on, on some of the things that I want them to do. But I do think in time, it'll absolutely lessen that from the daily operational, you know.
And you know what, Travis, those two have been sure the longest, they know the ropes, they know, they know what's all happening, going on.
Yep, I agree, and, and they've kind of, you know, already taken on a lot of those duties and responsibilities from a training standpoint. They both, really, all of my folks in there are, you know, incredible when it comes to, hey, uh. Someone has a question, maybe internally on the way to approach a situation or an incident, you know, they'll all kind of give their perspective. Uh, but these two that people kind of look to, hey, what are your thoughts on that? How should we handle this? Should we structure ourselves differently to kind of manage this incident? So they're already kind of doing that. So I think now letting them get a little bit of the administrative, you know, functions that kind of coincide with that, so it'll be good.
And what I think will be great for you is we're getting more and more, um, special events.
Oh, very much so.
And, and the pressure has to be absolutely lessen for you as far as, I mean, look what happened at the, at the Little Cross.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I can, I can see, our county's growing, it's, it's gotta happen.
Agreed. And I, and I do think that we can do a lot on our end, you know, with one, being notified of the event taking place. You know, and then we can, you know, bring on some additional folks and then structure ourselves internally, much like we did with Rag Ride. To where it lessens, you know, I'm not gonna say burden, but the duties and responsibilities of, you know, of the event or incident. On top of our local, you know, nitrogen admin traffic, just kind of our.
And that rings so smooth, Travis.
Rag Ride was great, at, at least from my perspective, from my folks' perspective in there.
It was smooth.
Very smooth, very smooth. We had our out process, you know, our, our kind of final, you know, meeting with them in there yesterday, and it was great. Everyone kind of echoed the same thing. I will, we got a bit lucky, which I'll play all day.
Oh, there he is.
But we did, uh. With, with the incident that took place at the raceway, initially we had two on, you know, to manage that, but. It became far in excess, in excess of size, scope, complexity to where it just became too much. So Dawn and Elizabeth both came from home and they were in with like ten or twelve minutes. Uh, so they were here to then man position three and four, which I think is then reflected on the receiving end from the first responders. And, you know, the public trying to reach out.
Super.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That shows you they really care.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, I'll say any one of them downstairs, you know, if they could, and I had, I had others reaching out, I'll, I'll come in, I'll come in, I'll come in.
Travis.
So.
Wow.
Yeah.
Who else do you?
Yeah, well, I don't think it's, yeah, I don't think it's, it's just me, it's just me, I think it's, you know, their want and desire to serve the public and, and make sure that.
I respect you.
These guys and gals and, you know, the public are all getting the best that they possibly can, so. Well, I appreciate this, I'll make sure that she's got the letter next door. Go from there.
Okay.
I hope everybody's in this.
Everybody getting, everybody getting home and recuperated. My wife is home, they have the children at home, we've started school. And it's.
Yay!
All ranch ready?